Okay, ready for me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, the, um, alright, so the, the, one of the requirements to submit an application for CDBG funding is that you hold two public hearings. One has to be held before the application is submitted. And then if your project is approved, the second one is held at the end of the project, kind of as a report back. So this is the first public hearing and would cover any CDBG applications that the city would submit this year. So the, but we, we already have, um, two prospective economic development applications. Uh, one for, uh, funding for the Hampton Inn that's proposed to be built, uh, near Walmart. And the other for Alstom, which has been awarded a major contract and needs to buy additional equipment and add more jobs. So, um, Missy, the minutes needs to reference both of the companies. Uh, we didn't, I didn't put them, which companies in the, in the ad, but as long as it's mentioned in the minutes, we're okay. Now, I, I don't have, um, a lot of detail on either one of them. Um, both of them would be for equipment. Uh, for the Hampton Inn, it would be furniture, fixtures and equipment to set up all the rooms and whatever, um, facilities they may have there. And I'm estimating based on the number of jobs to be created, that application might be, be in the range of, uh, four hundred and fifty to five hundred and twenty-five thousand. Um, Alstom is looking at, um, a nine mil- nine million dollars in equipment purchases. And so, um, they would be up against the maximum grant that could be, would be available, which would be seven hundred and fifty thousand. So, um, and based on their, um, projected job creation numbers, they should easily qualify for the, for the maximum on that. So, um, but in addition, we can also talk about other types of CDBG projects that the city might be interested in applying for. Uh, right now, we're, uh, working on a housing rehab program that was funded last year, as well as another phase of sewer relining that was funded last year, or funded in, uh, two thousand nineteen. And, um, the sewer relining project will be wrapped up this year. Uh, the housing rehab program will wrap up sometime next year. Um, but the city could apply for other eligible CDBG activities, which can include, um, infrastructure improvements, economic development, obviously, as well as housing rehab. So, uh, does anybody have any questions about either the Hampton Inn or the Alstom projects?
Both really good projects. Uh, thank, thank you, Kathy. Uh, you know, both, both those projects, uh, you know, even though they're separate projects, they, they really do have a synergy and tie in together. Uh, with the, with Alstom growing and the expectation to, uh, you know, add another two hundred and fifty jobs and preserve another four hundred jobs. Um, you know, we really, they'll, they'll really be bringing a lot of people in, which will create a lot more traffic. Um, you know, even from upper management and historically, uh, you know, the hotel on the southern end of the city has, has been full. And, you know, a lot of times when companies such as Alstom bring people in, um, you know, because that hotel is full, they're staying out of town and, and they have to stay out of town and commute in. So, you know, the Hampton Inn will, will definitely add some relief to that, uh, you know, being located on, uh, thirty-six, uh, right north of Wegmans. I, I think you'll, you'll see a very successful business class hotel. Uh, the, the Alstom project speaks for itself. Already, you know, for those of you who've driven down there, already begun the site work down on Shawmit Park, um, that's going to be a huge project. It's gonna be huge for Alstom, huge for the city, huge for the, uh, the area. All, all good projects, uh, is Kathy referenced sewer relining, and we'll talk about that a little bit later on in our regular meeting. Um, we do have money left over from the last time, uh, which we plan to, uh, use up and reline even, uh, more, uh, more, uh, sewer relining throughout the city. And, and we've, we've got Mitch Cornish here tonight, and as we get into the meeting and talk about that, uh, we can talk about, you know, which streets, uh, you know, which, which parts of the sewer truck line will be, um, affected and, uh, uh, reline. So, a lot, a lot of good projects, uh, lined up for this year and, uh, and, and beyond. Anyone have any questions on any of that? Pretty straightforward. Well, Kathy, thank you. We appreciate it.
Okay, well, let me just, let me just clarify the, the process for the economic development application. Um, we have to present some basic information about each of the projects to the Office of Community Renewal, and, uh, we have a phone call scheduled for Friday?
I think it's Monday, isn't it Monday, Kathy?
Cindy says it's Monday.
Okay. Monday, okay, yeah, right, Mon- Monday. And, um, uh, so we're gonna present that, it's the basic information then. And at that point, the OCR should tell us, okay, so they may ask for some information, but they will have to open up the application slot, if you will, within the, within the system, so that we can file an application online. And once they open that up, I believe we'll have sixty days to pull the application together and get it submitted. And, and then, um, the decision should be made within a month or two of when it's submitted, because they, uh, you know, staff reviews it and then they present it to the, um, the board for approval, and I believe their board meets monthly. So, could, you know, it could be a fairly quick turnaround in terms of getting an answer.
All right, thank you, Kathy.
Okay, you're welcome. Do, do you have any, for me to stay on for the meeting if there's, are there questions about the environmental review, or you all shot?
Um, that, that's your choice. If you'd like to, you're more than welcome to hang on and, uh, and, and we can. Um, I, I think those, uh, those two resolutions are pretty straightforward.
Okay, okay. And Mitch can describe where they are, but what, what sections are included much better than I could anyway.
Yep, that's fine, Kathy, thank you so much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, we'll talk to you Monday.
All right, bye.
Thanks, Kathy.
All right, well, this public hearing is now closed, and we will, we will transition into our regular meeting. Uh, we waiting for anyone else, Missy?
Um, let's see, we've got, we know we weren't gonna have Sergeant Terry, I think, John Carbone, it looked like he was logging on.
Yeah, I thought I saw him a second ago.
I see John, but I don't think we have video with him usually, so, um, Pelch is here.
President?
Yep, so everybody's here.
Jeff, can you hear us?
I hear ya.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah, step forward.
All right. Just waiting for John to log on, it looks like.
It looks, to me, it looks like he's on and he's not muted, but I don't see his video.
Okay. We'll give him a minute.
Yeah. So these little things that, all these people are muted, yeah.
Don't be alarmed if my wife shouts out a Jeopardy answer, all right?
All right. You can always pause the meeting to see if she gets it right.
Well, maybe for Final Jeopardy, if it goes that long.
Fair enough. It looks like John is on, but he's muted. I don't see him, but I see the little microphone in the corner.
Yeah, I see his name, and I see that he's muted.
Yeah. Test.
We can hear you now.
Hey, John?
Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear us?
Hello?
That might be a no.
Oh. It's always fun here on Hollywood Squares.
The good thing is, it doesn't look like we have any students yet tonight.
Well, that's good, because they probably wouldn't get that reference.
Right? Well, for anybody that needs to know, Ellen, our stenographer, does have closed captioning on, if you need any help with that.
Okay. John Carbone, can you hear us yet? I see John twice, is that?
So do I.
I did too.
Test.
Yeah.
Hello? John? John Carbone?
Didn't last week he have to call in or something last month?
Well, seems like there's always one, right? Well, we could do that again if we need to. Let me try him. Hey, John, you want me to put you on speaker? We could hear you, but it didn't, didn't look like you could hear us. Okay. So you're trying to connect right now, it looks like, connecting to audio.
Look, yeah.
All right. Now, your microphone is crossed out on my screen. Now it's gone, say something in the computer.
Test. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear us?
No. Say something.
Can you hear us? Hello? No? All right, doesn't sound, doesn't look like you can hear us. You want me to just put you on speaker on my phone?
Yeah, I'll keep playing around with it.
Okay.
All right.
You're probably gonna have to mute yourself on the screen, so we don't get that library run.
Okay.
I can mute him too, if he needs me to.
Okay. All right, John, let's see if that works, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. Missy, you got him, you hear him, okay?
Got him, yep.
All right. Okay, this is as good as it's gonna get, folks. Okay. All right, this meeting of the common council is called to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Concello?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Allison?
Here.
Sergeant Terry? Warner?
Here.
Cleveland?
Here.
Valentine?
Here.
Here.
Shina Barger?
Here.
Carbone?
Here.
Nine eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, um, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll move.
Motion by Jim Bassage.
I'll second.
Second by Dan Warner, any questions? If not, call the roll.
Concello?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yeah.
Bassage?
Yes.
Shina Barger?
Yes.
Carbone?
Yes.
Nine eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Um, just so you know, I will be giving the, uh, state of the city address right after we get through our regular business. I'll entertain a motion to approve the reports of officers. Motion by Jessica. Second by Kevin. Any questions on any of those?
Uh, is the, is the quarantine the reason we don't have a codes?
Oh, Bud has been off, yeah, yeah, Bud's been on quarantine, yes, that is the reason.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, Bud's, I think he's due back to, what, the twenty-first, isn't it, Missy?
He is due back Thursday. And we did have the meeting last week, I separated everything out, and I'm thinking I just didn't put the public safety meeting stuff in the packet. I can scan them all and send them to you tomorrow.
That's right, yeah, they were in the, uh, public safety meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Bud has been, uh, just to give you a quick update, Bud has been working remotely, uh, during this quarantine now, so he, he still is working, we're still in contact. Okay, do we have the motions?
Yes.
Do we have the motions? Any other questions? If not, call the roll.
Concello?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bassage?
Yes.
Shina Barger?
Yes.
Carbone?
Yes.
Nine eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. We do have one committee report, and that is audit.
Yes, those were, uh, the Honorable John J. Buckley, Mayor, members of the County Council, ladies and gentlemen, those were audited and approved by the email by audit committee members. Doug Brown, Jim Bassett, Richard Argen Terry, Tabitha Valentine, Audit Committee Chairman, John Carbone, bills audit approved, County Council, one million, three hundred and eighty thousand, seventy-three dollars and ninety-one cents. Community Development, twenty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-one cents. Payroll of one, one hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-five cents, for a total audit of one million, five hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and three dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Thank you, Chairman. Is there a motion to approve that report? Motion by Melissa, second by Dan. Uh, you'll, you'll notice that number is quite a bit high, um, that, that number does include the, uh, our retirement bill.
I was just gonna say that, yeah.
Yeah, which, a- as you all know, is very high these days and trending upwards. Any questions on that? If not, call the roll.
Hello?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bassage?
Yes.
Shina Barger?
Yes.
Carbone?
Yes.
Nine eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you, that brings us to the resolution portion of the meeting, and the first resolution has to do with a tax exemption mandate.
Whereas on March seventh, twenty twenty, Governor Andrew M. Cuomo issued Executive Order Number Two-O-Two declaring a state disaster emergency for the entire state of New York. And whereas on December eighteenth, twenty twenty, said declaration was extended to include subdivisions seven, seven A and eight of Section four fifty-nine C of the real property tax law, and subdivisions five, five A, five B, five C, and six of Section four sixty-seven of the real property tax law, which permits the governing body of an assessing unit to adopt a resolution directing the assessor to grant exemptions pursuant to such section of the twenty twenty-one assessment rule to all property owners who received that exemption on the twenty twenty assessment rule, thereby dispensing with the need for renewal applications from such persons, and further dispensing with the requirement for assessors to mail renewal applications to such persons. And whereas on December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, the New York State Legislature held a special session to pass the COVID-nineteen eviction and foreclosure prevention act of twenty twenty, A-one-one-one-eight-one slash S-nine-one-one-four, which passed both chambers and was signed into law by Governor Andrew M. Cuomo. Included in the legislation, subpart D, is a provision that, which requires the assessor to grant exemptions pursuant to such section on the twenty twenty-one assessment rule to all property owners who received that exemption on the twenty twenty assessment rule, thereby dispensing with the need for renewal applications from such persons. Provided, however, that the local assessor shall make available renewal applications through postal mail or electronic means in order for eligible recipients to file renewal applications in the event that such eligible recipient determines his or her income has changed in a manner that would grant him or her a greater exemption than what was present on the twenty twenty assessment rule. The governing body, governing body of an assessing unit must adopt the resolution directing the assessor to require a renewal application to be filed when he or she has reason to believe that an owner or qualified for the exemption of the twenty twenty assessment rule may have since changed his or her primary residence, added another owner to the deed, transferred the property to a new owner, or died. Be it further resolved that the city council hereby authorizes the assessor to require a renewal application to be filed when he or she has reason to believe that an owner who qualified for the exemption on the twenty twenty assessment rule may have since changed his or her primary residence, added another owner to the deed, transferred the property to a new owner, or is deceased. Resolve that the city council is authorized to pass such resolution and that the assessor is instructed to take any such necessary actions, the above described directives. Resolve that the city council is authorized to patch, so, pass such resolution immediately, and which shall expire May first, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Missy, that is a mouthful, well done.
Very nice job, Missy.
Is there a motion? Motion by John Allison, second by? Not everyone else. Jim Bassage, okay. Um, you know, in the, you know, there, there's two sentences in here, which I think really kind of capture what this is. Uh, requires the assessor to grant exemptions, that's the mandate part, and the governing body of an assessing unit, uh, unit must adopt the resolution. Uh, we, we do have our assessor here tonight, and, uh, you know, Cindy can give you a little bit more background on it. I don't think, you know, in talking to Cindy, I don't think it really affects, uh, a large number of people, but I'll let Cindy, uh, get into it in a little more, uh, depth.
Hi, um, basically what it originally came out as, if a house was to sell, or a person was to pass away, the exemption could not be removed until twenty twenty-one, which would go into twenty twenty-two. So they get an entire year of, of fifty percent exemption for their, um, up to fifty percent for county, city, and school, on top of star. So, every year, we've been able to remove exemptions this time of year, if something has changed along those lines. But with the new law that he passed, everyone got it exactly the way it was last year. So, this way, we can at least remove the exemptions that fully would not be carried over for twenty twenty-one.
Yeah. Anyone have any questions for Cindy, or? Pretty straightforward. All right, thank you, Cindy. Uh, Missy, go ahead and call the roll.
All right, Concello?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yeah.
Valentine? Bassage?
Yes.
Shina Barger? Shina Barger? We got you on mute, Steve.
Wave your hand if that's who that is.
He doesn't have any one.
Steve?
Yeah.
Shina Barger, thank you.
Technical malfunction.
And Carbone?
Yes.
That's nine eyes, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, our next resolution, uh, oh, what was that? Next resolution has to do with the DOT agreement. Working in the state right away.
Whereas the city of Hornell, as part of their streets department, sometimes works on the right-of-way of roads owned and/or controlled by the New York State Department of Transportation. And whereas, New York State Department of Transportation is requiring that the city of Hornell sign an undertaking, which has been prepared by the New York State Department of Transportation, agreeing to certain terms and conditions regarding said work on or near state highways. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that the mayor for the city of Hornell is hereby authorized to execute the undertaking for the benefit of the New York State Department of Transportation that is attached here to and made a part hereof, as if fully set forth.
Thank you, is there a motion? Motion by Dan Warner, second by Kevin Valentine. So, this resolution accomplishes a few things. First, it, it gives a DOT notice of when we're, um, doing work in the right-of-way around thirty-six, uh, gets us, uh, complies with the rules and regulations that the DOT sets forth, um, ensures site restoration, basically leave it as you found it, um, and it addresses liability, uh, for the city, uh, when we're doing that work. We're, we're joined by Public Works Superintendent Mitch Cornish, and Mitch, you, give us a little bit of background on how this came about, because I don't recall, I don't recall, uh, this agreement in prior years, maybe it existed, or just re-upping it, but...
No, Mayor, the, uh, the undertaking basically is a promise, um, that says that we'll take care of, uh, the, our liabilities out on the state highway, um, and it's, it supersedes our insurance papers that we used to have to get every year. We, we'd have to get a million or a two million dollar bond to work out on the highways every year, and this, this will supersede that, um, from now on. It just, it, it just gives the city's promise that we'll do our due diligence out on the highway. We actually do, uh, yearly, it's called a perm thirty-three, it's a highway work permit to work on, on thirty-six and twenty-one. So this, this is just a little, something new they wanted to, to add on.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions about this?
Yeah, i- is this gonna be like an annual renewed annually, or is this just ongoing?
Uh, we, our permit is renewed annually, but this undertaking should be a permanent , uh, item to that.
All right.
Permit.
Any other questions or comments? If not, call the roll.
Concello?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine? Valentine?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Bassage?
Yes.
Shina Barger?
Yes.
Carbone?
Yes.
Nine eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, the next resolution is to reappoint Rex Wiggers to the Library Board.
Resolve that the common council of the city of Hornell hereby approves the reappointment of Rex Wiggers of thirteen Riverside Place, Hornell, to the Hornell Public Library Board of Directors, Directors for a three-year term to begin February first, twenty twenty-one, and expire January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by, I, I heard you, but I didn't see the hands, is that John?
Motion Brown.
Oh, Brown, I'm sorry. Motion by Jeff, second by Melissa, any questions? Call the roll.
Concello?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bassage?
Yeah.
Shina Barger?
Yes.
Carbone?
Yes.
Nine eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. The next resolution is to reappoint Sharon Worth to the Library Board.
Resolve that the common council of the city of Hornell hereby approves the reappointment of Sharon Worth of fifty-three East Main Street, Hornell, to the Hornell Public Library Board of Directors for a three-year term to begin February first, twenty twenty-one, and expire January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Motion? Motion by Jessica.
Motion Brown.
Second by Kevin Valentine. Any questions? If not, call the roll.
Concello?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bassage?
Yes.
Shina Barger?
Yes.
And Carbone?
Yes.
Nine eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. And the next resolution is to appoint Vanessa Spatunik.
Resolve that the common council of the city of Hornell hereby approves the appointment of Vanessa, Vanessa Spatunik of four twenty-five Cleveland Avenue, Hornell, to the Hornell Public Library Board of Directors for- Resolve that the common council of the city of Hornell hereby approves the appointment of Vanessa Spatunik of four twenty-five Cleveland Avenue Hornell to the Hornell Public Library Board of Directors for a three-year term. Commencing February first, two thousand and twenty one and ending January thirty first, two thousand and twenty four.
Motion. Motion by John Allison, second by Kevin Valentine. Any questions on this one? If not, call the roll.
Concello.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Allison.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Bassett. Bassett, we didn't hear you.
He's thinking about it.
Shoulda Barger.
Yes.
And Carbone.
Yes.
Nine eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. The next resolution is in regards to the sanitor, sanitary, tripping over my words here, sanitary sewer relining, the DPA.
Resolve that in accordance with the National Environmental Policy Act of nineteen sixty-nine and the related authorities listed at twenty-four CFP part fifty-eight, the common council of the city of Hornell announces its attempt intent. To conduct an environmental review of a project to reline the sanitary sewer trunk line along portions of East Avenue, Rockwell Street, Conklin Street. East Elm, Pearl Street, Main Street, Pardee Street, Oak Street, River Street, Loader Street and Canistio Street. Further resolve that the common council designates John Buckley Mayor as the certifying officer responsible for all activities associated with the environmental review process to be completed. In conjunction with the CBPG project number five five two PR one six nine dash one nine. Be it further resolved that the common council hereby accepts the environmental review of the project prepared by Labelle Associates. DPC and determines that the project is categorically excluded under twenty-four CFR fifty-two fifty-eight point two five A. As it involves the rehabilitation of existing sewer lines in kind.
Thank you, Missy. Is there a motion? Motion by John Allison. Second by Dan Warner. So we, we touched base on this briefly in the public hearing.
One second.
And last year, as you recall, we were awarded five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars to do our relining. Well, we came in way under budget. And in fact, we have two hundred and fifty-three thousand and change left over to reapply towards future relining. So that's, that's what we're doing. This has been a great program for us. You know, this, this all started, you know, geez, how many years ago was the nightmare in Elm Street, Mitch? Do you even remember that? That's.
I believe it was like post-six, Mayor.
Yeah. So, you know, this has been, you know, really a godsend to us and. I, I think we're, you know, just talking with Mitch, we're getting to the point where we're almost finishing up with all the trunk lines. You know, at some point we'll have to start tackling some of the smaller lines throughout the city. But this, this has been a really good, really good program for us. One that's much needed and, you know, I've talked about it before in different meetings. This is the stuff that you don't see. It's the stuff that's underground. No one's going to see it, but when it fails, it has a profound negative effect on everyone. And then, you know, your phone and my, my phone starts ringing. And so this is really a way to get out ahead of that. And, you know, take care of that infrastructure, you know, proactive about it. Mitch, if you want to, you know, talk about the individual streets a little bit or the areas, go right ahead.
As you said earlier, Mayor, the, we're, we're running out of areas to line with CBPG money. They, they will only let us line a ten-inch diameter pipe and above. In this last, this last sections, we are going to line, well, if the, if the bids come in decently. There's some twelve inch on Pearl Street. It runs down to main, down to Pardee, down Oak Street to River. That's one section and the other section will be where the old Hornell wholesale is. There's a twelve inch line that runs under the tracks. Over to Buffalo Street, goes down Buffalo Street to Loader and dumps into River. And I believe that is a fifteen inch main. And those, those will be the last ones we'll be able to line under this program because of size. And as you stated earlier, a, as we have been talking, we'll probably have to start doing some of our side streets, which are six and eight inch mains. The sewers, the sewers were put in in the eighteen hundreds, eighteen ninety-eights era. And they are clay tile and we have some videotapes of them. The, the whole top of the pipe is cracked or there's missing pieces. And after they put the fiberglass liner in, it looks almost brand new. I think we'll get another hundred years out of them. Yeah.
That's again, you know, real, real good investment to do this and, you know, we're very grateful for all the success that we've had acquiring these funds, you know, from the, from the program.
Is there a plan for the other, John, is there a plan, Mayor's plan for the other smaller sections?
Yeah, you know, what, what Mitch and I have been talking about is setting up a reserve fund because the, these monies are only available for a certain size truck line. I, I wish it were available for everything. Honestly, that part doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to me because. Whether, you know, whether you're talking a larger line or a smaller line, it accomplishes the same thing. It's designed for the same thing. But be that as it may, we are looking to start a reserve fund so we can start tackling some of the smaller lines throughout the city. Because, you know, regardless of the size, they're all still old and they all need to be addressed eventually. So that, that is our plan going forward.
Thank you.
Mayor, what happens to the money if we don't use it all?
Well, we, we send it back. So that's why we've always made a, you know, made a point to rebid it. You know, identify other lines that we can apply the monies to. And, you know, the last, the last couple of years, we've had a lot of success coming in under budget. If you recall, last year we came in under budget. We had, what was it, fifteen thousand or so, Mitch? We tackled the Maple Street Church Street area up near the bridge.
Yes.
Put it, put it out.
Madison Avenue, Atson Street, that area. Yeah.
Yeah. So.
If, if we use it all up, if we do all the tens and aboves, can we amend the grant to include eights?
No.
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 No, because that's, the, the guidelines of the grant specifies what size you can use it on and what size you can't.
Okay.
If it were that easy, we'd do it.
Joe, they, they consider those collector lines and they, they will not, they, they will not supply money for those.
Okay.
Good thought, though. Okay. Did we get the motions? I think we got the motions.
Yes, we did.
Anyone have any questions? Coming to a street near you. All right. Call the roll.
Concello.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Allison.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Valentine. Bassett.
Yes.
Shoulda Barger.
Yes.
Carbone.
Yeah.
Nine eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. And the next resolution is the seeker.
Whereas the city of Hornell is planning the rehabilitation of the sanitary sewer trunk lines along portions of East Avenue, Rockwell Street, Conklin Street, Elm Street, Pearl Street, Main Street, Pardee Street, Oak Street, River Street, Loader Street and Canistio Street in Hornell. To be undertaken with funding provided through the Community Development Block Grant Program Award. CBDG project number five five two PR one six nine dash one nine. Therefore, be it resolved that in accordance with the New York State Environmental Quality Review Regulations, the common council has determined that it. That the proposed action is a type-two action as defined by OCR. The project qualifies as a type-two action as it. Involves rehabilitation of existing public facilities in kind. Further resolved, the common council will take no further action with regard. To seeker for this project as type-two actions are not subject to review under seeker.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion by Kevin Valentine, second.
Brown.
Okay. Any questions on that? Basically the same thing. If not, call the roll.
Concello.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Allison.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Shoulda Barger.
Yes.
Carbone.
Yes.
Nine eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. We do not have petitions, but we do have claims.
Now therefore be it resolved that claims the amount of one million, five hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and three dollars and eighty-seven cents as audited by the audit committee of the common council of the city of Hornell. Are approved and authorized, paid as audited. Common council, one million, three hundred and eighty thousand, seventy-three dollars and ninety-one cents. Community development, twenty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-one cents. Payrolls, one hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-five cents for a total of. One million, five hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and three dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Melissa, second by Jessica. Any questions? Call the roll.
Concello.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Allison.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yeah.
Bassett. Shoulda Barger.
Yes.
And Carbone.
Yes.
Ten eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay. In the miscellaneous portion of the meeting, I, I just wanted to touch base before I, before I get into the state of the city address. Just want to touch base on where we are, you know, with federal stimulus. It, it does look like there's momentum and the likelihood, you know, we, we've been talking about this, you know, throughout the last year. You know, where are we in terms of federal aid to local governments and, you know, and to use a football analogy, we've, we've gotten into the red zone a couple of times. And, and kind of stalled out, I think with, you know, the new Congress coming in and new president coming in, I think there is a. Not only a willingness, but momentum behind that to finally get this across the finish line. I, I know there's, you know, a number that's been tossed out there. I don't know how that breaks down, what the formula will look like as far as. You know, how much would, you know, come to each state or, you know, local governments within those states. But it, it does look positive. I, I can't tell you, you know, when or how much or what it's going to look like. All I can say is. There is momentum in behind it and, and wind in the sails, which is good news for us because, you know, we could definitely use that. You know, we, we've talked about sales tax ad nauseam the past several months and, you know, where we are with that. You know, the, the governor and cutting the funding streams and, you know, it's been a lot of, a lot of doom and gloom out there. So. Hopefully the feds will, you know, act on this sooner rather than later. I know there's a lot of details that have to be worked out and, you know, there's always negotiations and, you know, working out the. You know, the, the finer points of it, but it, it does look good. So, you know, we'll, we'll keep our fingers crossed and we'll, we'll keep the council informed. As to where, where it goes from here. Before the state of the city address, does anyone have any, anything you want to go over?
Hey, John, with regard to the stimulus money, is there any implications with our going into a new budget year? Like, is that a concern in any way? Is it? With regard to using the funds for two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one? Because we're kind of right in the, right in the middle there.
I honestly, Jess, I, I would imagine most of the funds would be applied to revenue loss. But I, I know, you know, while doing the budget and the governor talked about this today. You know, they're forecasting, the, the state that is, are forecasting to be down in revenue next year as well. So, you know, the devil's always in the details. I, I can't really say sitting here now that I know. If the money could only be used to offset revenues from the, the year that we're in or a portion could be used going forward. That I don't know. It'll just depend what type of language they have. You know, whenever, whenever these monies come down from the state or the federal government, there's usually strings attached or, you know, at least guidelines that you have to follow. But, you know, this has, this is still being worked on and negotiated. So. When we, when we do find out, you know, we'll definitely, you know, have that conversation with finance committee and entire council. Okay. Anything else? No, going once, going twice. All right. Well, let's see if I can. Well, this isn't exactly how I envisioned doing the state of the city address, but it's, it's always so much nicer to do it in person. Over the last year, our nation has been gripped with social unrest, protests, riots, looting and violence in cities across the country. Which recently spilled into the United States Capitol Building just two weeks ago. Adding more stress and anxiety to an already deeply divided nation, coming off from a contentious presidential election. Additionally, we continue to deal with an ongoing pandemic that has taken a heavy toll on the human side as well as the financial side. Coming out of a strong two thousand and nineteen, the momentum will look to continue into two thousand and twenty. Then last spring, reality seemed to have turned upside down. From coast to coast and around the globe, every one of us has been affected by the pandemic brought on by COVID nineteen. The toll has been heavy. Right here in our community, the virus ripped through nursing homes, infecting our most vulnerable residents. During that period, I spent countless hours on phone conferences and in Zoom meetings with our county manager, congressmen, state representatives. And DOH officials in order to bring resources here to address the outbreak. Throughout the pandemic, my administration has worked hand in hand with Stuben County Manager Jack Wheeler and the County Health Department. Oftentimes making decisions, difficult decisions in order to help protect the health and wellbeing of our residents. My office has worked diligently with our business community, offering guidance through the oftentimes confusing tangled web of executive orders coming from the governor's office. While also navigating the CARES Act to help during these extremely difficult times. Throughout this pandemic, we have lost far too many dear friends, family and community members. While both residents and businesses suffered immensely from the economic shutdown. The city itself was and continues to be negatively impacted. Revenues including sales tax have drastically declined. While the governor continues to withhold twenty percent of vital funding streams such as AIM and CHIPS. Which threatens our ability to deliver services to the level our residents expect, need and deserve. State Comptroller Tom DiNapoli has recently reported that state tax receipts are actually three point eight billion dollars ahead. Of where they were budgeted to be back in April of last year. New York State has already received more than ten billion dollars in federal stimulus funding to provide critically important budgetary relief. The two hundred and fifty million in aid owed to municipalities represents only a point one four percent of the state budget. And the budget division has already stopped withholding school aid. The twenty percent withholding was deemed a cash flow device. Yet the state has issued three point five billion in revenue anticipation notes as a mean of dealing with cash flow needs. Tonight, I call on the governor to release the essential local funding cities and villages desperately need and were promised. It is simply the right thing to do. Cities such as Hornell should not be left behind. Through these difficult and unprecedented times, my administration has continued to meet the needs of residents. Working with the city Chamberlain and the finance committee, we tightened our belts, reducing the size of the city budget and maintain fiscal responsibility. We are simply doing more with less. While local governments around the state were forced to lay off or furlough employees, we did not. In fact, we were able to make progress in many areas in spite of the pandemic. The city continued to prove its aging infrastructure, replacing two bridges, paving eleven city streets, relining approximately four thousand feet of sewer lines. And we completed the city's tenth Bosie's House. As we look forward, plans have already been drawn up to build two additional Bosie houses, which will be placed on Preston Ave. Where the devastating fire of two thousand and nineteen took place. This project will rejuvenate the street and revitalize the neighborhood, providing two new single-family homes. We also saw two new water storage tanks come online at our water treatment plant as part of an ongoing six million dollar project. Chief Operator Lenny Fucci and his department guided the city through a seamless transition, switching from old tanks to new. The water pollution control plant had their share of challenges this past year, accumulating excess sludge from outside sources. Chief Operator Rich Dunning and his team met the challenge head on with a multi-pronged approach that remedied the situation. Two thousand and twenty-one will see a long-awaited replacement of the Canistio Street Bridge. The city was awarded an eighty-four thousand dollar grant to extend the popular Shawma Trail with work expected to begin in the spring. The city also won a five hundred thousand dollar housing rehab community development block grant. Which will help struggling homeowners with much-needed repairs and upgrades to their homes. After months of research and meetings, the city entered into an agreement with NICE to transition our streetlights. After months of research and meetings, the city entered into an agreement with NICE to transition our streetlights to LED, which is expected to cut costs in half and save thousands of tax dollars. Our codes, codes department continues to be very proactive and successful in helping to get zombie and vacant properties in the hands of contractors who are rehabbing these properties and returning them to the tax rolls. We have also embarked on a comprehensive review of city codes in order to meet today's needs and standards. Over the last several months, the Hornell Police Department, led by Chief Ted Murray, have crafted the Police Reform and Reinvention Plan. This is a self-reflecting, continuous improvement plan, which will be used to better serve our community. In order to safely and effectively deliver police services, reliable and functioning equipment is needed. This past year, we invested in our police department, bringing in three new vehicles. Additionally, the department acquired a new K nine vehicle, which was purchased through donations from our wonderful and supportive community. Led by Chief Frank Rosowski, our fire department continues to deliver a high level of service to residents throughout this pandemic. Over the last several months, the fire department has partnered with the County Health Department, assisting with rapid COVID nineteen testing for the general public and quickly responding to microclusters in the city. Economic development continues to flourish in the Maple City with the wonderful news of Alston being awarded the one point eight billion dollar Metro contract to replace the aging Chicago Metropolitan Area Fleet. This contract calls for a base order of two hundred cars to be built in Hornell with the option of three hundred more. Alston expects to hire an additional two hundred and fifty employees, which means good, which means more good-paying jobs here in Hornell for years to come. In preparation for the Metro contact, contract, site work has begun at Shawma Park ahead of construction of a new one hundred and fifty thousand square foot factory for new car shell manufacturing. Groundbreaking for the new business class Hampton Inn Hotel is expected this spring. This hotel, which will be located north of Wegmans, will offer seventy-six units and is expected to create between twenty-five and thirty new jobs. Park Grove Realty continues to work on the Rockland Silk Mill, repurposing and transforming the old Mariner and Rohr Building into twenty-three market-rate apartments. Pending voter approval, Park Grove is also in the early planning stages of redeveloping the soon-to-be vacant Bryant School. Just over a year ago, the city of Hornell was awarded the ten million dollar downtown revitalization initiative. This past spring, our local planning committee submitted our strategic investment plan, which is now being reviewed by the state. In the coming weeks, I expect state officials to announce the approvals of the proposed projects. As I said before, winning the DRI is a game changer for the city of Hornell. Projects that were, were once merely dreams can now become reality. This grant will open the doorway of economic opportunity and propel the city to new heights. COVID nineteen may have slowed many things down, but we have not and will not let it stop us from moving the city forward. While we still find ourselves in the midst of a pandemic, there is not only light at the end of the tunnel, but it is glowing brighter than ever. For all the difficulties, setbacks, and challenges we have faced in the past year, we have much to celebrate and be thankful for. Moving forward, we must set aside the politics of hate and division that permeate from our state and nation's capitals. We must set aside ego and political ambition. We must remember that the only reason we are here is to serve our community. Only together, working as a team, can we continue to achieve our goals and work for the betterment of each and every individual living in this great city we call home. I thought it would be fitting to close with a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King, especially in light of the events of the past year. Dr. King said, "I've decided to stick with love. Hate is too great a burden to bear." Thank you, and God bless.
A little standing ovation. Thank you, John.
Thank you. And I, I wish we could, uh, all be together and, uh, you know, hopefully, you know, as we get through the pandemic and the, the vaccines get out there and, uh, we get into spring and summer, you know, hopefully we can, uh, get back to normal and, and start meeting in person, uh, you know, like, like we should be doing. So, um, I thank you, everyone. We still have a lot of challenges ahead of us, uh, but we're gonna take it day by day and we're gonna tackle them one by one and, uh, together we're gonna get that. That I'm confident of. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by John Allison. Second by Kevin Valentine. Okay, any questions? If not, call the roll.
Conacello?
Yes.
Brown? Hold on, I muted you, Brown.
He's on mute.
Yeah.
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Warner? Did we lose Dan?
He mouthed, yes. He's on mute, too.
Shake your head, Dan. Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine? I got you muted too, Val. I muted everybody, so, okay, he's got a head shake. Bassage?
Yes.
Shina Barger?
Yes.
And Carbone?
Yes.
That's nine eyes, your honor.
Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful night and, uh, wonderful rest of the week, and we'll all get together soon. Thank you.
Good to you, John. See everybody.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Hey, Jumbo?
Yeah.
Did you get your vaccine?
No, I haven't been able to find a site where it is.
I'm getting mine tomorrow, Sue and I at Tops. Are you signed up on that website?
No, the, the one I got sent from Oasis, um, we had to go through the hospitals and, uh, all the hospitals around the list were out.
Call, call my office tomorrow. Sue will sign, sign you up and give you that list. There's Alfred Pharmacy, you can sign up, up, up there also.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah, Doctor Peterson's got some.
Thank you.
So, Jumbo, Bassage, so call tomorrow. Sue's getting her shot at twelve-thirty, so call in the morning and she'll hook you up with, uh, what to do.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
I just got Kay signed up in Danswell. I just kept pushing that button, Joan, read my book, and I just had Kathy is on cloud. I got Kathy on back Thursday.
Really?
Oh, yeah.